Confusing because I believe that all of our students were affected by the pandemic. So no specific demographic of students was more affected than the other. However, this project addresses some of those concerns heard by members of the high school community, both past and present.
Question six, has the district consulted with legal or auditing experts to ensure that this allocation won't result in future compliance or financial issues? If so, what were the recommendations?
Yes, we consulted Cindy Ormsby, the district's, one of the district's attorney. Being that this, this was not a usual conversation that's held with legal. She did not make a recommendation. However, she did state that if the funds were allocated by the district that were approved by the state and the board, then she would use, she would agree with the board and the state. There are and will be no compliance issues. Desi, Desi has already approved the spending and encumbrance of those projects, of the projects in question.
Yes, I'd like to, with what Dr. Triplett has mentioned, all of what he just said is very important. The other thing I want to mention is that the S R three funding is really part of a bigger piece or puzzle. There was roughly $31 million of funding that was approved to the district for, through S R three to address our needs. And we worked with Desi specifically on, including this last chunk of monies about this, and they approved all of it. The second page of the handout that I've given you shows even that approval. It shows that Desi approved that last allocation where the $6.5 million resides. And so we worked closely with Desi as Dr. Triplett has mentioned. We talked with Cindy Ormsby, the law firm. We also worked with our auditors with regard to this issue and of course, our construction manager.
Thank you. Question seven, is this project, if this project is later deemed non-compliant with ESSA guidelines, what is the contingency plan to address the shortfall in funding?
There is no, we don't, we don't foresee a compliance issue. So we don't have a contingency plan because the, the extra funds for the project was approved by Desi.
We also talked directly with Desi leadership regarding this question. They assured us that those funds had been approved by the committee and that there was no concern about the, the spending of those funds in that way. Number eight, what and where is the initial specific proposal presented to stakeholders to show the intended use of these ESSA funds?
So we do have, in front of you, there is a packet of information. We do have some information. I'm not sure how much of that information we have. That's, that's, because the, I don't have, I have very limited knowledge because this, this whole entire ordeal kind of predates me and the administration. But we did try as best we could to locate some information so that the board can have some information for context.
Mr. Brooks, can you talk to us about the information that we have in front of us?
Greetings again, Board of Education and Dr. Triplett. And those of us in the community that are here, other than the board and Dr. Triplett, Ms. Rixman. Wanted to kind of just mention a few things. I actually had a PowerPoint that I wanted to walk through, but we're having an issue with connection. So basically what we have here in front of you, we have the AIA agreement that shows basically the information for the, the specific projects is outlined and also recorded and reported to Desi on how we would be spending these remaining funds. These funds, again, as you all know, were encumbered as of September 30th in conformity with Desi's guidelines. And again, these are the specifics. You have read through this information and you're very much aware of the various components of this effort. But we wanted to, again, to get this in front of you. The second page that is in this attachment basically addresses the $31.3 million of S R three funding that the district received. Yeah, so that, that very first, yes, Ms. Edwards, that very first page, the AIA agreement, that's the Architectural, you know, Institute of America. So they basically, this is, they outlined the specifics on exactly how we are allocating the funds to address these various projects, district or throughout the north campus, the high school campus. Again, $3 million toward the high school track and field replacement. An additional, additional $1,100,000 toward the Bell Ridge bus lot improvement. That's an effort, as you know, we're bringing in 15 electric, electric buses and all of the, the programming for that site. While the provider Highland Fleets is doing a lot of the work and paying covering it, there's a large portion that we're going to take on. And, and so we've earmarked some funds for that effort. Thirdly, we have the high school Viking Hall upgrades. That's a pretty important thing, as you all know. I, I'm old enough to remember growing up in North County when Viking Hall was, was the stuff. Where I, I can remember back, you know, coming up as a kid, when Viking Hall, we used to host the holiday tournament, known as the Christmas tournament back then, and we had all of the schools from the region throughout, and even sometimes some from the Illinois, the east side that would come over.
In Memphis.
Exactly, in Memphis, come up from Memphis and they would, we'd have some great basketball tournaments. That, that was a golden age in a sense for that facility. And we benefited from that as a school district and as a community. And so we want to do some upgrading. Obviously, there's more work that needs to be done, but we have a chunk of, of this earmarked to do some upgrades to that facility. And then fourthly, we have the facilities maintenance master planning services. Now, we are hoping, now this is very important strategic effort that's going to take place. We have again, 1.6 million allocated here. But we really want to build, kind of be like the old Quasar commercials, you know, where the quality goes in before the name goes on. That was the old Quasar by Motorola. You all are too young for that. You don't know what I'm talking about. Mr. Humphrey may know. Okay, yeah, but you know, we want to, to really do some great things in planning long-term for the, the district. Looking at our, you know, our capital structure district-wide, not just at the high school, but all of our facilities. We want to plan, and so this master plan is going to be a part of that process. I want to note this, and I've mentioned this, Dr. Triplett knows this, and I think Mr. Humphrey knows a little bit about this as well. But we are also working with our underwriters, Stifel Nicolaus. They've actually presented us a proposal where we can go out in April of 2026 for a no-tax increase bond levy, which would generate another $50 million of capital monies to, for our community to, to address all of our needs, all of our school buildings and facilities. It would be a no-tax levy increase, meaning that we wouldn't be increasing the tax rate currently that taxpayers are paying. We would just be extending basically the length of, of the loan. And usually, I mean, you know, with the right campaigning, et cetera, I've been involved with many of these things and they've all successfully passed in multiple school districts. And so this is a great opportunity, but this master plan will also incorporate, we'll be looking at and prioritizing and of course, working closely with you and other community stakeholders to identify what are the specific needs for all of our buildings? What, what can we dream about even, okay, long-term? So I want to mention that these are again, the four major categories that we are looking to expend these important funds in. The second page that we have here basically is showing, again, as I had mentioned to you, we have received $31.3 million in total ESSR three funds over the last really four-year period of time. And you have some materials in front of you, Dr. Triplett mentioned this, but going back, this predates us pretty much, but there were approvals for the acquisition and the utilization of these funds. And so we have, you know, this information that shows the 31 and shows how we've received payment of these funds over time, over the last three years. What I wanted to also do, the third page, and this is where I really wanted to also have my PowerPoint working.
We got, we do have copies of the presentation.
Great. So then, you know, we have basically spent roughly about 18% of the 31 million. We were talking about learning loss and those types of things, very valuable questions and appreciate, you know, Ms. Edwards and the rest of you for, you know, posing these questions. But we, we basically have some information on how funds were allocated out of the overall ESSR three monies toward learning loss and other efforts. Not just the cap, you know, the capital piece, but also salaries, instruction. And so that's, you know, we really, the district had, in its leaders and former leaders, had taken into consideration learning loss and, and efforts, et cetera, in this overall programming. So that is kind of encompassed on the third page there. And then finally, there was a question that came out during, I think, our last board meeting on just how our facilities group and team has, we have in our current budget, some funding that's available for, you know, immediate use. So I know we were talking about the ninth grade center and wanting to do some repair work to that. And so we do have available budgeted funds, you know, seven, $800,000 of, of monies. Now, some of those have been earmarked for other things, but you know, we have some monies available that can be used in the immediate timeframe to address that ninth grade center. And perhaps some of the other things that you all have had, had concerns about. So that's pretty much it for what we have in front of you with regard to this matter. I will entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We're going to hold the questions until we've, we've gone through the entire presentation here. Thank you for that additional insight. What and where is the initial specific proposal? We've just gone through that information and we've got much of that data provided for you here. There is a correction to a question and, and it states, what and where is the initial specific proposal presented to stakeholders to show the intended use of these ESSA funds prior to the allocated request sent to Desi? I'm not sure if I understand that question. So what I'll do is I'll refer to Director Edwards to, to clarify.
So the question was really to understand the proposal prior to it being sent to Desi for the allocation of these remaining funds. Not the full plan, just for the ones that's currently being allocated. I do have a question. Can I go ahead with the question?
Let's do this in, in order. What I'm going to do is we're going to take one question at a time. Once we exhaust all of these questions, each board member here will have an opportunity to ask questions that they may have. All right, so the, go ahead.
I, I think to answer that question, Director Edwards, on page three, you can, you'll see where it says facilities 4,000. You have $20 million.
Which bit, where?
On the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Those are the $20 million that were assigned, that was assigned to capital outlay. Prior to, prior to, yeah. Under facilities. So prior to the, this, this current project, $20 million were already assigned to capital outlay. So this is a part of that money that's, that was already assigned to the capital outlay.
Thank you. Moving forward. No additional questions there. Question of number two from William Humphrey. Superintendent should come prepared to explain his rationale for each item on the approved list. This, there was concern that this was never shared with the board.
I believe it was in October, when Josie first shared this information with the board. So that the, the information was shared with the board and discussed and, and approved in the October board meeting, I believe, or November, one of them. But it was approved and this information was shared with the board. Specifically, the information on this document, the AIA document, that was the information that Josie presented to the board.
All right, so the, the question was, should be prepared to explain the rationale? I think we've covered that, but if there's additional explanation needed, we'll, we'll address that once we get through this last question, which is number five here, listed here. Is there a process or path forward if the decision is made to modify any approved encumbrances?
Currently, we have not discussed that.
We did talk with Desi about those funds and we asked specifically, is there an opportunity to reallocate change or make modifications to the intended purposes of the use that had been submitted? There was a resounding no. These, these funds have been approved of the way that they've been submitted and there is, there is, there would be no accommodation for changing or reallocating these funds short of a catastrophe at the district level. And so there was, there's, there's no opportunity to change this allocation at this point. Or make modifications at this point. Okay, that is resolves all the questions that were submitted. You've heard the superintendent's response to those questions. Are there questions about the responses that were given? And I want to be careful about the way that that is articulated. These are the questions that were submitted and the superintendent has taken time to respond to those questions to ask new questions, I think would be unfair at this point. And so if you need clarification, if you want to expound about the responses that were given, please, we will entertain that at this time. I'll start with Vice President Humphrey to my left.
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Secretary, Rival Taylor.
I don't have a question, but I do, well, I guess I do. Number three was not a question, but it was a statement. I'm assuming that's what it was. VP Humphrey.
Yeah, though that is a statement and not a question related to this topic that's on the, on the floor.
Says something that can be discussed at another meeting?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Because I'm looking at, you just said that we did vote on, we've already voted. It cannot be changed at this time. As far as the ESSA funds and looking at what the ESSA funds should be expended on. So I think that's the reason that there was some type of, I guess, a recall to the votes. Because we were according to this, and I understand everything that's on here. I understand what has been submitted. But when you look at this paperwork, I guess my concern is, is any of the money really being used for these expenditures?
So the question is?
It's not really a question, it's just a statement. That's, that's just my concern, is the money really being used for that? And I understand that that questions have been asked, they have been responded to. Question number four about the two to four-year colleges, the gymnasium and the football field being used for those particular items. But I think some of these are very important. And such as it says here, summer and after-school programs to address learning loss. That's one thing that we're still dealing with because we're still hearing at every meeting that our children are not reading at grade level. Our children are not, be, or they're not excelling in math scores. So those things, those are the things that I am concerned about, that some of that ESSA money should have been used for that. So it's not a question.
So you don't want a response to that?
Yes, I didn't like the response to question number one, and I want that to be on the record. I did not like that response.
Okay, can I just make a mention of something?
Absolutely.
So the Director Taylor. So when we, when we talk about, on the second page, you'll look, you'll see all of these things and you'll see associated costs and monies that was allocated to those things on, on the, on sheet three. In addition, you see highlighted. In addition, you see highlighted facility upgrades. We had twenty million dollars uh designated and allocated to facilities, facility and outlet. The football field and the gymnasium fall under capital outlet. And monies were already uh allocated for that. In addition, we had um, salaries. We had uh, programming, all of those things. We did have money allocated for those things. And so we did, and we still are purchasing uh things with regards to uh instructional items. So it didn't just stop uh with the encumbrance of S R funds. That'll, that's an ongoing uh price that we're, we're accomplishing.
Okay. Thank you. There will be an opportunity uh for comments um, after we answer all of these questions. Um, Director Edwards.
Thank you, President Hage.
Uh huh.
Um.
Do you have a microphone?
Yeah.
Okay.
My question, um, my first question is uh, in response to question number three, um, superintendent, you mentioned that there was a cost savings. Could you um briefly give us where the cost savings come from? Were they from the um, construction that was already being done at the high school?
Yes, absolutely. Um, several times, uh, Josie Hayes uh presented to us. Uh, and he, he talked to us, especially toward the end about what monies we were able to save.
Mm-hmm.
And so those same funds, we use those same funds that they saved to uh, complete the, to, to encumber, to complete the other projects.
Okay. Um, my other question would be, were there other um, proposed uses for these funds outside of this?
I heard a lot of conversations from, just throughout the, the year about, especially from alumni uh, with regards to the gymnasium and it not being able to fully be used. And um, we were looking at a lot of options, plastic seating, benches and all of those things. And so we, we hit a brick wall because we didn't think that we could do those, those uh projects, because we thought that we'd run out of money. And so uh, we just kind of flatlined it. And then during the football season, we had a couple of high ankle sprains, because we have soft spots on the, on the field. And so um, alumni again, and staff and students were like, hey man, uh, how can we patch up the field and those kinds of things? So just hearing those kinds of things and understanding that we didn't have the funds initially, um, they weren't being addressed. And so when, when, when Josie started talking about we may be able to save some money, we still didn't address it, because we wanted to make sure if we're going to do these projects, we had enough money that we wouldn't tap into our regular budget to uh offset anything.
Okay, my, my last question is, um, how do you plan to communicate um, this new project to the community? I know that the funds have already been approved, but is this something that you're just gonna um, you know, communicate to them over time or just the initiation of it, breaking grounds, things of that nature? How is it gonna be communicated to the community?
Waiting to, to communicate it. Um. Well, it's a record, I want to say, I want to recognize, that's a new question. Uh, and we haven't had a chance to, 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 to vet that out. Uh, and so what you're going to hear is a, a, a response that should be informed by communications. Um, and he's not, uh, our communications director is not here to chime in on that. And so I um, I, I would caution the superintendent for responding to that without proper input from the staff. But if you want to share some of your ideas uh for doing that, please feel free to do so.
And just so, I just want to just kind of touch on that we, we were uh cautious about sending information out without making sure the board was fully informed and aware of, of the use of the funds. And so we wanted to make sure that was solid before we uh reached out, sent information out to the public.
Uh, is that, any other questions? Thank you so much, uh, Director Pearson.
Um. I guess my question is more, right now is the time to ask questions only, correct?
The question is, uh, if there's an, an extended response that you'd like to have from what's been addressed so far? Yes.
I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure that we're able to make a comment.
Yes, you will have um, an opportunity to make comments, is, is, we're on time to be able to do that.
Okay, cuz let, that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're doing great on time.
Okay.
Okay, uh, there are no questions. Director, uh, Milton Roberts.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. I guess my first, well, I have a comment and then a question. First, thank you for sharing the information that you shared.
Can you use that microphone? Okay, great.
I always forget that it's there. Okay. Um, what I was saying is, thank you for sharing the information that, that you have shared. Um, I think that's very, to me, it's very helpful. One of the things that's very important to me as a board member is that we have what we like to call a collaborative process. And I think that was one of the things that was missing from this process and what made this process a little bit uncomfortable for some of us. Or I should say for myself, okay, cuz I like to know what I'm voting on and I like to have the details, okay? In order for me to say, okay, yeah, that's what I want to do. Um, in looking at the um, breakdown that you have as to um, the projects, I don't think anyone had any issue with, you know, the um, the Viking Hall upgrades, and I'm with you, I think that'd be great for that to be uh state of the art. Same thing with the bus lot, same thing with the um, facilities master plan. Though I will ask a question there, and that is, did we receive any other bids for the cost of that facility's plan? Um, my understanding is that what happens for this is that the trades need to come in and they need to look at HVAC, et cetera. Given that we have a lot of new buildings and new construction, that means that our older buildings are the Wellston Center, the Bell Ridge Operations Center, the Wayside Garden Building, the Wellston um, Administration Building and so on, Belmore and Washington. Um, so you're gonna have the same trades rotating through all those locations. A million six seems a little bit high for that. Um, I've actually, you know, done a little bit of research and it seems like probably two times higher than what it probably ought to be. So a little bit of, you know, concern about that. So, you know, have other estimates been given? Or are we just, you know, is this just a ballpark or what's the deal with that number?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, Director Milton Roberts, that's correct. Uh, this is an estimate, and it is, we actually aired on the side of going a little bit higher. The construction manager felt that we should go a little bit higher on it. So we, we want to, uh, as we manage these projects, we hope that we can um, do better uh, than the numbers that are reflected in these estimates. But uh, we felt that that was an overall solid uh adjustment. Now, when the time comes when construction is, is taking place, we will be, of course, bidding out the work. So that'll be bid out and we'll be getting the, you know, the lowest and the best bids on the specifics, the various trades that we'll be working with. We will uh ensure that we are following board policy.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. The second thing I had is on the high school track and field replacement. Um, we have an estimated, estimated price of three million dollars for that. And I guess the question that I would ask is, are we talking about a spectacular, we can play a Super Bowl field? Or are we talking about a functional track and field with a normal, um, you know, scoreboard as opposed to a Jumbotron that costs thirty thousand dollars or whatever it is? Because that, again, that seems like a very high amount, when our real concern about that field is the track being not in the correct um formulation for us to run a track meet.
Well, all of that is together, the, the track field as it's, as it sits is not regulation.
Right.
So we can't have uh, track on that, on that track. We can't have uh, uh,
Track meets.
Yeah, track meets on that track. Additionally, the, the football field is, is in, is not in good shape. Uh, and so making upgrades to that football field will cut down on a lot of injuries. And, and so that there'll be upgrades to the scoreboard and the uh, uh,
Light.
Lighting and all those things.
And that, that goes through a bidding process.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and I understand that, but again, my question is, are we looking at making this a uh, you know, it's the best field out there, or are we looking at making it a serviceable field? Because three point, three million dollars is a lot of money for a football field and a track when we have other needs within the district. So that's my question.
When you're making the upgrades like turf, it's even more expensive if you plant, use grass.
Right.
But turf, using turf is cheaper than, than grass. And, and the growing rate on, on a turf field is probably better than two million dollars. But we, we got additionally, additional stuff that's going on around the turf, like the track and field, like the um, other events that track, that attract, that comes with track and field.
Right.
Uh, bleachers, scoreboards, those kinds of things.
Well, I mean, when you look at it, I mean, you know, for a turf field, you can go as low as fifty thousand dollars and go up to a million three. Okay, so there's a range of what it is that you can do. If you look at a scoreboard, you can go eight thousand dollars to a range of about fifty thousand dollars. There's a range of what you can do. So again, my question is, are we trying to have the, you know, the state of the art, top of the line? Or are we trying to have a functional field? And also are we recognizing the fact that when we put in a turf field, that means that we have to have people who maintain the turf? So there's special equipment, there's chemicals, and there's training and people.
So, so I want to, I want to, I want to understand your concerns, uh, Director Milton Roberts. We, we've been talking about, um, you, it sounds like you're saying there's an opportunity cost to giving our students excellence. And we've addressed this a couple of times, there's no opportunity cost here um, to giving our children an excellent stadium and school that they can be proud of. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with understanding the concern.
Let me clarify.
Okay.
Again, my question is not at this moment in time, since you're saying that we choose not to un, un um, allocate the funds, because that is a choice, okay? What I'm asking is, are we going to be moderate in our expenditure? Or are we going to be less than moderate in our expenditure? Because we still have the challenge of children needing enrichment during the summer. We still have the challenge of children needing before and after school care. So if there is a way to encompass both the field and some of these other needs, is there, you know, what, what is our ability to do that?
Uh, I love.
Why don't we plan that?
Thank you. It has been clarified that these funds must be spent in this way. It is not our choice to continue. It is, we've already made the decision to spend this, these funds in this way. We cannot reallocate, uh, undo this decision. This, these are the ways that these funds have been allocated. Uh, and as a board, we do have an opportunity uh to review all contracts um, that um, are being implemented for this district. So you will have ample opportunity to be able to say, I think that that's too much that we're spending on a scoreboard. You will have an opportunity to give feedback on the expenditures of, of that particular item, as you will with all contracts.
Those will be brought to us for us to see.
You, you will, that they will go through the same vetting and contractual process that all contracts go through.
Okay, so then another part of my question is, at the end of all of this, when you get to the six point five or whatever it is that we're spending, and we're, you know, one of the things that you have shared and that has been shared by others is that we're hopeful that we can be a little bit more frugal and not necessarily share all that money, or spend all that money, excuse me. So let's just say we get to the end of the project and we've got, let's say, two million dollars left over. So does that money then become encumbered only by the high school? Or is it the district money, which is my understanding of what S R funds actually are? That they're not associated with the school, but rather they're encumbered to a district.
So the question is, if we don't spend the uh, the S R funding, uh, where does that excess, are those?
Yeah.
So, I think the lesson here learned, for me at least, uh, is, is that when we have the excess money and we know we're going to have that excess money, is to have conversations with the board.
Thank you.
Because I think we didn't, we weren't given the opportunity to do that, because we were uh, butted up against a deadline. So we want to make sure if we're, if we're having, we have ex, excess funding, then we'll make sure we get input from all stakeholders, so that we know where we're spending those dollars.
I think that's very important, um.
But I do, I, I will say, uh, Director Roberts, uh, I spared no expense on student experience. And so I want to make sure we're not, we're not shortchanging students and, and, and cutting corners for the sake of trying to save dollars.
Right, no, 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 I, I'm agree with you, with you on that. I guess my concern is that when you're talking about football or you're talking about track, you're talking about, you know, a nominal number of students when we have over twenty eight hundred students in the district. So the return on investment, you know, is, you know, really not as broad as one might like for that kind of money, when we have other very pressing needs around literacy and math and so forth.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, there's another question from Director Pearson, but I do want to see if Mr. Brooks can answer the question. If we experience uh one million dollars in savings on these expenses, does that one million dollars go back to the state? Does it remain in the district? What happens to, to those savings?
Good question. Good question.
We have told Desi that we would spend these monies according to this format that they've approved. So if those might, we, and we do want to manage savings, we want to hit that sweet spot. Um, the thought would be one of two things, that, that money either reverse back, goes back to, to Desi? Or it's reallocated amongst these things that we've identified, okay? Um, in some fashion. So uh, what we do, we'd have to find, if we have savings, a creative way to repurpose those monies amongst these identified categories. Uh, or, uh, again, the money could revert, you know, there would be grounds to return the funds.
Could it go into that last category where you're doing the, um, the building assessment? That it could go into the repair of, like, if we find things wrong, which we know we will, that it could go into repair of those buildings?
That's a great uh, thought. Uh, we would hope, and that's something we need to further investigate. But again, Desi has approved this specific purpose or use of these funds. And so, yes, maybe in that last category, it could, you know, if we, we need to find a, a way to fit it into what we have asked permission uh, from them and gotten approval first. So that's a great question. I think we can maybe further look into it. But um, again, we want to make sure we're compliant and we don't want to be returning any money.
No, no, I don't want to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, uh, Director Pearson.
I don't have a question. I just have a lot of comments and.
Would you like to start the, the comment period? So what we will do is we will move into item, at, item five. Um, one, which is board announcements and comments, and we will start with Director Pearson.
Okay, um, I wish that more people were here so that they can hear my words. But hopefully there's enough time next board meeting, so that I can say my comments then also. But um, as a alum of the Normandy School District from pre-K to twelve, so behind this project, because it's more than just a field, just lights, just track. Because when I was in middle school, well, I'm sorry, when I was in sixth grade, sixth grade, we had field day at the high school. They have not had a field day at that high school in probably over fifteen years. When I was in high school, we didn't have that field to do track. I didn't play plenty of sports, but I did shot putting this. We could not have any type of track means at our homeschool, because the field, the track was never in re, regulation, never. And I've been out of school for a long time, and that's all I'm saying. But it's more than just a field, just lights, just this, just that. Cuz the other stuff, and yes, we, the, the children need to read, but they need to read at home too. I'ma say it. Cuz it, it, it goes, it go further than just the school educating your kids. You have to educate them too. So, um, yes, it, it, it helps with academics, because if it, it, it was said by a former Normandy alum who has been successful in sports. If the kids see that we have a nice facility, I'm gonna want to go there. I'm gonna want to perform there. Last year, our football team went all the way to, I think, a step away from state. I don't know, cuz I don't play football, I just know the levels. But had we had the right type of field, some of them games could have been played at home. The Friday night lights, when all of our surrounding districts are able to have Friday night football games, we can do that also to produce revenue for our school. Viking Hall, and I'm, I keep saying it, Viking Hall should have been one of the first projects done before everything else, because it's produced revenue. Viking Hall is a staple in the St. Louis community. That's one of the biggest gyms. That's one of the biggest gyms in St. Louis. Nobody has, in St. Louis has a gym like Viking Hall. Nobody. That's a stadium away from the school building. Away from the school building. When I was in high school, when I was in middle school, when I was in elementary school, there was the Normandy Holiday Tournament. Where schools from all over, Memphis, Brooklyn, Illinois, Peoria, all of these different places came during Christmas break. How many people you know want to be around their schoolmates and teachers and kids during Christmas break? But Normandy had everybody there. And when I say everybody there, everybody from the superintendent to the board members. If Ms. Sheila Williams was here, she was one of them people too. So it's more than just, yes, other things in the school need to be fixed. Yes, it needs to be a plan fixed it for it, but if this been in, in the works since twenty twenty one and it took them this long to do what they had to do at the high school, now they're actually moving their feet, and I, I, I'ma say it, because they wasn't moving their feet at first. It is what it is. They wasn't moving their feet at first. So now that they're actually moving their feet, we have deadlines for things that are active deadlines and we're seeing progress. It's more like when people work for, work for a company, they say, oh, you ain't making no money. The money gonna come. The education gonna come. Things don't happen overnight. Wrong one built in a day. We not making the changes that we want to make now. Quit fastening the hurry because as humans, we want rapid turnover. That's not how that works, but we're making changes. I don't know if a lot of y'all on social media, but Normandy was in a list of schools that had improvement. Yes, we only have point five percent, but we have improvement. I can't tell y'all the last time we, and Normandy gets such a bad name that the good things that goes on in Normandy, nobody talks about. Nobody talks about. We have pilots, athletes, DJs, CEOs, presidents, doctors, lawyers. I guarantee you that everybody has ran across somebody that went to Normandy. We went to an event last Saturday. I think about fifty people were honored. Out of them fifty people, I counted because I'm petty like that. Out of those fifty people, seventeen of those people ran through Normandy, whether they graduated from Normandy, whether they worked at Normandy. So it, it's, it's some stuff like, I get what y'all saying. The education is very much needed. We need to get our kid. Normandy ain't the only school district with kids that can't read. But again, as I stated, reading starts at home. Because I sit down with mine and read and she swear. So I get what y'all saying about other things in the school district need to be done. But this shouldn't even be a topic if we have so much other stuff going on. This shouldn't be a topic when we have so much other stuff going on. Like, that, that, that's all I got from my soapbox on that part. But I do want to say LM thirty nine is having a toy drive this Saturday in Normandy High School from eleven AM to three PM. That's alumni giving back. You got two, I'm gonna say high celebrity alumni that is giving back to Normandy. Um, there's an award ceremony this Friday by the Community Impact Network. Teachers, alum, admin is, is nominated to receive these awards. I'm, I nominated to receive an award. There's great things coming out of Normandy. We can't get over the past because all of this stuff here, this, this was before all of us, except for Mr. Humphrey, because he said he got nine years. But all, all of this is before us. So if we gonna keep holding on to the, on the past, we can't go in the future nowhere. But that's it. I do want to touch on one subject. Miss, Miss Rogers, you said that, uh, there's no before and after care. The early learning center has a list of day cares in our footprint. There's a system with before and after care. It is up to the parents to also make that effort. We cannot depend on the school district to do everything. And I'm speaking as a parent. I'm not depending on the school district to do everything. And, and, and that's just me. Because I, I was also one of those parents who, my child didn't go to the school district for two years. But the school district she went to, she wasn't learning. So where did she come back to? Normandy, because she was learning at Normandy. I, I think that's about, about all that I have. I just want y'all to see the, the, the other side of it. Like, I, I get what y'all saying, but I want y'all to see the other side of how this can improve our school district. I, I, I have to go two more comments. I promise I'm gonna be done. But if, if you notice around our, 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 our footprint, there's going to be a change. There's going to be a change. And if you're not paying attention to it, if you don't know the history of our, our, our footprint, then it's, it's, that's, that's an issue. We got a, a distillery in our, our dish, our footprint. We have a golf course that's being sponsored by Jack Nicholson. We got great people coming out of our district. We got great people in our district. These people are in our district and they don't, I'ma say, they don't get paid like they want to, but they ain't here for the check either. Let's think about what we providing for our kids first as opposed to everything else. I'm done, President Hodge. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That is all about time for comments this evening. No, no, we've got, we've got time, so, um, well, let's go back to Miss Robert. I, I think Miss Rogers.
Let's see. That's a hard act to follow. So I guess what I would like to say is that I agree with Director Pearson that it is the parents as well as the school's job to raise up the child, as they say, okay? Um, I also, as a mom of two, believe that it is incumbent upon us to try to gather up the community, if you will, and to support them as best we can. And one of the ways that we can do that is by having robust before-school care, after-school care, if we can have it, holiday care, if we can have it, enriched summer care. That's not just care, but rather an extension of what it is that we're trying to teach in our classrooms. Because we have students that are very, very capable. We just have to provide an opportunity to tease out the things that they need to tease out so that they can be the scholars that they are. That also includes us doing things that don't involve them sitting in four walls in a room. We've got to get the kids outside. We've got to get them engaged in gardening, you know, looking at climate and so forth. Because our kids are doing something that is actually textbook, and that is, if they're sitting in a classroom all day long and all they're being, that, all that's happening is that they're being told to do stuff without them having an opportunity to experientially touch, feel, see, and do, and without getting to go outside and to explore and to discover and do, then what happens is that kids rebel a little bit, and they don't necessarily give you the rest because they're tired of being told. And so the more that we can get them moving, the more that we can get them outside, the more that we can get them doing the sports that we were just talking about and other things as well, the better we are going to be. And the better our kids are going to be, because there's nothing wrong with our kids. Our kids are powerful and our kids are smart. But we've got to make sure we're providing the supports, the wraparound services, the tutoring, before and after-school care, the enrichment, the opportunities to go to the art museum, the opportunities to go to field trips, the chess team starting at kindergarten, okay? The golf, to take care of the golfing thing, starting at first grade, okay? We're missing those opportunities and they're just as important as some of the other sports opportunities that we've talked about. And one of the things that I would like to say lastly is, we're always talking about these things. I appreciate today that you came and you brought this information and you were able to share with us, you know, how this money lays out. I would look forward to sitting down with you, talking about some of those other opportunities and getting them on the books. I'm tired of talking about them. I want to see them in action, okay? That includes social emotional learning and so on. We talk and talk and talk. The kids want to do. Okay, it's the adults that want to talk. The kids want to do. Give us the information, let us make decisions, and then let's do. And with that, I'm gonna say happy Kwanzaa to everybody, happy holidays. I know we'll be back one more time, but I love Kwanzaa. And I think we've got great kids and we've got great, great, the other thing we never say enough of is, we've got great, great teachers and they're doing their absolute best. And we need to celebrate them more. So make sure that if you've got a teacher in your life, you hug that teacher, that you say good things to that teacher, that you lift up and support that teacher, because we can't do any of this, none of this at all, without them.
Thank you, Director Milton Roberts. Director Edwards.
Thank you, President Hodge. Let me first say this. For the last, including this meeting, three meetings, there's been such a tension when we get to this microphone. Okay, I don't know what it is that's going on, so I guess I just take my opportunity and chance to do the same thing. Okay, we got these board norms here that say that we supposed to come to these meetings prepared. We make decisions based on the information that we receive so we can make informed decisions for our school district. Yes, I love Normandy. I'm not an alumni of Normandy, but guess what? I'm still a Viking and I ain't no victim. Okay, so here we are. We here and we want to gather the, the information that we need individually as a board member, however we ask for, and still collectively as a board for that one decision that we make. And as this document right here say, we come to board meetings informed and prepared. We support board decisions. Whatever the decision is, if I ask for information and I receive it, it doesn't matter who, which board member it is, but this, such this tension that we have when we get to this microphone, where we want to say, no, stop, I don't like this, this, that, and that, that gotta stop. I'm not that person.
That's right.
But I only did that to reflect what I'm hearing. I support this district and I love this district. I have family lineage, lineage that has gone to Normandy. But we must stop with this outward projection of tension. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Edwards. Director Taylor.
Thank you. First, I would like to say thank you, Dr. Brooks, for the information that you gave us. And yes, uh, there has been quite a few questions. I'm sure there's been quite a lot of discussion regarding these funds, uh, just like Director Pierce, I mean, the, uh, Milton Roberts, when she asked if there are funds after everything has been done, is it possible for us to do that? And that's been one of my concerns. So I'm gonna start with that. That's been one of my concerns because if everything is done and there are additional funds, we do know that there is a lack in our children. Yes, parents need to sit down with their children and they need to read with their children. They need to help their children with homework. We know that, but we also have to be conscious and aware that we are in a day and time in two thousand and twenty four. The majority of our children, our grade school children, they are being raised by maybe sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-old parents who are still living at home with their thirty, thirty-five-year-old parents, grandparents, who still want to be uh, young adults and still want to do their thing. So this is, it's, it's like a generational thing. And forgive me, if I came to this board, the reason that I ran for this school board is because I am so concerned about our children, and I'll put it like this. I am so concerned about our African-American black children. In my community, when my children were growing up, my sons had to deal with drugs. They had to deal with the drug dealer on the corner. Yes, even one of my sons was one of those. He did those. And so my concern is, I don't want to see our young people grow up, come to school, and still not learning and getting what they need in the school system. I hear our superintendent says it all the time. He talks about and the salaries. Our teachers are not being paid enough. Our principals are not being paid enough. Uh, the counselors, the maintenance workers, they're not being paid enough to have to come to school every day and deal with all of the issues that our children bring to school. A lot of these children come to school, yes, they're dealing with mental issues. They're dealing with abuse, whether it's physical, mental, spiritual, whatever. Some of them come to school every day because why? They may not have food at home. We don't know, but we know that these children come to school every day. And so my concern is that our children will come to school, get what they need. Yes, the football field is gonna look beautiful. Yes, the track is gonna look beautiful. But let's not lose our focus. Our focus is our children, or at least that's what I thought. That's why I ran for the board, because I was concerned about our children. And so when I first came to the board a year and a half ago, accreditation was the key word. All we talked about is getting our accreditation. We don't even hear that word anymore. What happened to accreditation? What happened to supporting the principals, the teachers? These are the things that are concerning to me. So yes, let's take the S of funds. You, you agreed with Desi, this is what you're gonna do with it, but let's not forget about our children. Let's not forget about our children. And as Miss Cheryl Robinson said, I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas, a wonderful holiday Kwanzaa, uh, what's the other? Hanukkah, however you celebrate it. And I just want to say this, that Jesus is the reason for the season.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, Vice President Humphrey.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentations. The importance of tonight's meeting for me is very simple. One of the board norms talked about making sure that every voice would be heard. Uh, over the last several months, it seemed to be a struggle. Every time there's a dissenting opinion, it, it seemed to be a struggle. So tonight for me was a step in the right direction. I think the other thing that's important, and, and Dr. Triplet mentioned this, the level of collaboration that should have happened before that decision by this board with the superintendent would have avoided a lot of the, the, the consternation and the things that we're hearing. And I understand the importance of co-curricular activities. Because one of the things when you're talking about kids that have social emotional issues and things of that nature, every one of our children, as much as we can, should be involved in after-school co-curricular activity because they were designed to help shape character. And, and a lot of times, our children are lacking in the area of self-control and self-management. And the way that you establish discipline and those things is through co-curricular activities where you get them involved in, engaged in sports and activities that they love with a loving, a caring adult, and it helps to shape that character going forward. I also, I remind myself what I, Albert Einstein said. He said, if you continue doing the same thing expecting different results, it's called insanity. I looked at our recent MAP scores for the last three years. They were pretty much flatlined year after year after year. So what that says to me is two things. What are we gonna do different? And where can we find innovation? Somebody in the United States of America has children that are similar to ours and they're getting success. I know we've heard about Ron Clark Academy in Atlanta. We've heard about, you know, the urban schools in Chicago. We need to find out what, what are the, the other schools that are doing to get uh, our kids to the level they need to be, because when I look at the list, I'm tired of being at the bottom of the list. Our kids deserve more than this. And so I appreciate each of my board colleagues sharing what they had to share. But as I said before, the most important thing for me coming out of this meeting is that every voice was heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Um, I have reserved my comments in the past because of timing. But since tonight, we scheduled this meeting from six until seven thirty, and it's twelve minutes after seven, that gives me about seventeen minutes. I got a long, I got a long list of three, three words to be heard like Mr. Humphrey had said, and we got time for everyone. No, but seriously, I do, I, I, I agree with the sentiments that have been made around the, the, uh, the frustration, uh, at this table and this board. I, and I do recognize. I, um, and I do recognize, um, um, the, uh, the challenges that we have. These are very, very big challenges, uh, but I hope, uh, this board understands and this district understands. This is the passion of, uh, this fully elected board. We carry on our shoulders, uh, uh, an expectation that hasn't existed in this district in eight to nine years. Uh, and that is to be accountable to, uh, the voters who put us in these seats. And so, um, we knew that we would have, uh, some tough conversations on this board. And, uh, the 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 challenge for us is to attack the problem and not each other. Uh, and so, um, it is my hope that as the president of this board, that I can rea- redirect attacks on people to the problem, uh, that that we're trying to address. That's the only way that we can move forward. Um, we've got some things in place, uh, that we're planning to do. Some board cultivation so that we're all on the, uh, same page about what our roles and responsibility are, responsibilities are. Uh, Mr. Humphrey has taken the lead and and planning our board retreat. Um, we've, we've spent a lot of time addressing some of the, uh, surface concerns that people may have uh, in building trust in this district. Um, I spent a lot of time with the superintendent, um, and we've come to the conclusion that every single one of us needs to develop. Every single one of us. I've never been board president of a district, school district before. This is my first time, so I need, uh, support and development. Uh, our superintendent, this is the first time he sat in this chair as a superintendent. He's been a school leader all of his career. Uh, but this, he needs development. Uh, to my left is our Vice President Humphrey, who's been here with us, uh, for a very long time. But even him, even though he might not see it, needs a little board development, right? All of us are new here. Every teacher, every student, every single person here has room for improvement. Um, and we've been gifted with another day to be able to do that. So it's in that spirit that I'm excited about next week's board meeting. Everybody needs to come out, bring your children, bring your aunties, bring your cousins. Um, we're gonna have a big celebration. We've got some news that just came out. Uh, and I hate to counter my vice president, but we have, uh, results in this district. Um, I got off the phone with Desi today. I don't know if you guys watched, uh, the Desi, the the Missouri School Board Meeting. Uh, there was good news about Normandy in the atmosphere. Uh, we're going to share, uh, that that news on next week. Uh, I think we should have a party in the rooms here. Um, but we're really excited, uh, about, uh, APR. We're gonna talk about accreditation. Uh, we're gonna talk about partnerships. And so I'm really excited about next week's meeting. I hope that, uh, everybody comes out and joins us. Uh, but with that being said, thank you all for your service, uh, to this board, to this district. Uh, thank you, uh, Carlton Brooks for your presentation. Thank you, Superintendent, for preparing such a thorough, uh, response to all the questions, uh, that this board has. Uh, and with that being said, I'll turn it over to our superintendent for closing comments.
I just wanna say thank you. Thank you, community. Thank you, board, uh, for the opportunity to really just kinda have genuine conversations around, uh, the lingering concern. So I I thank all of you. Uh, at this time, Board President.
That would be mine.
Thank you so much. All right, with that being said, it is now seven fifteen. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this work session. It's been, it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this board work session is concluded.